May 20th, 2013, Troy City Council Meeting. We are pleased this evening to have Assistant Pastor David Cole from Embassy Church International join us this evening for the invocation, if you would still remain standing, for the Pledge of Allegiance that will be led by the Tiger Cubs of Cub Scout Pack 17-12 from Waddles Elementary. Welcome Pastor. If you could just use that microphone, stand at the podium. However you want to do it, that's great.
Let's power heads. To the Father which dwells in heaven, that helps guides and directs us and keeps us on our course, helps us to mature; to the one we refer to as our Lord of Lords that helps us manage our affairs day to day, in our professions, in our fields of occupation, in government; to the one we know as King of Kings that speaks to the land and to the borders in which we abide in, that protects us Lord, establishes dominions and places of authority; to the one we call our God who abides in the heavens that supplies the systems of this world that we know and are operating within. We give thanks to you today for how you've kept us and given us the grace to meet every challenge and every need in our lives. We thank you for the leadership that's abiding here through Mayor Slater and through the council members of this chamber, and the leadership and the service that they provide to us. We thank you for the grace and the gifts that they're providing to us unselfishly in places of service. We thank you Lord that you grace them with unboundable measures of resources to their calls, things that they need to facilitate their, things that they see that are on the agenda that need to facilitate the needs of this community. We make a call to the heavens to supply resources, opportunity, finances. We pray Lord for the things that are hidden that even out of our reach that we can't even comprehend that be called into their presence and make itself known unto them. We pray for revelation, to abide over their thinking, that they think creatively and innovatively, and reach the things that they've never really conceived before as well. We thank you for all these things and we pray Lord as we continue to grow that the city of Troy will become not just a light, but a beacon to this community and for others in the region, that they will be drawn to this region for what it represents and for the value that it contains, both in our education systems and government, our protection, and just the way we operate and how we treat businesses and families. We thank you Lord for your grace again. We just pray Lord that you continue to guide us on this journey and give us strength, in Jesus' name.
Thank you. Okay, if we could have the Tiger Cubs of Cub Scout Pack 17-12 from Waddles Elementary come forward.
Yeah.
Right next to each other. Are we ready?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Good job. Good job. Thank you Pastor Cole. Troy City Council Meeting is now called to order. The roll call, Ms. Bittner.
Mayor Slater.
Here.
Councilmember Campbell.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Fleming.
Here.
Councilmember Henderson.
Here.
Councilmember McGinnis.
Here.
Councilmember Pennington.
Here.
Councilmember Teets.
Mayor Pro Tem Fleming.
Yeah. I'd like to move to excuse the absence of Councilmember Teets at this meeting due to business, other business engagement.
Support? By Mayor Pro Tem Fleming and supported by Councilman Pennington that we excuse the absence of Councilman Teets at the regular council meeting of May 20th, 2013. Discussion? Bill of vote, Ms. Bittner.
Mayor Slater.
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson.
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis.
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington.
Yes.
Motion passes. Our first order of business is certificates of recognition and special presentations. I will turn the microphone over to City Clerk Elaine Bittner for the first presentation.
Thank you Mayor. Tonight with, we have with us Mrs. DePonyo who's the principal of Costello along with Mrs. Lenihan who was one of the second grade teachers, and we also have a number of students from the second grade, and Mrs. Lenihan is going to talk briefly about the fact, the study that the second grade has been doing about Troy, and also there's a PowerPoint presentation to go along with it.
Thank you. Welcome. Good evening.
Good evening.
Could you move the microphone up please?
Right here?
That'd be great. Thank you.
Well, good evening, and we want to thank you for giving us your time tonight. We, the mayor and the city council and our manager, city manager and Mrs. Bittner, our second grade mother, who helped coordinate this, this evening. Our students, second grade students in all of Troy study communities, and they study communities here and far away, and we studied Troy, and we had an opinion that this was the best community anywhere. And once, we try to teach our children, if they have an opinion, they need to come back it up with some reasons and some evidence. And so, the PTO funded two trips. One trip was to go to the Troy Historical Museum, and for three hours, we were in Troy long ago, and we did chores, we went to the One Room Schoolhouse. It was a wonderful day, and we really feel we understand what it might have been like for those little, to be a child in Troy long ago. And then we got back to school and said, "Well, we live in a modern day, and we need to gather evidence that makes, that will prove Troy's wonderful." So we went on a tour of Troy. First, we stopped at Fire Station Number Five, then we went, took out our maps, and we went south and west and saw the library and came to City Hall, and Mrs. Bittner took us on a wonderful tour. The city manager even asked the advice of our seven-year-olds as to how we can make Troy a better place, and they were so honored. They solved problems sitting here at the, in the city council chamber. From there, we went by, we saw neighborhoods where people live, we saw office buildings where people work, and we saw Firefighters Park and other parks where people play, and Somerset Mall, which is what many of them were in awe of. Some children had never seen it. And so, the tour of Troy opened up their eyes to our community. The Nature Center took us on a tour, and we headed back, and we feel we had true evidence to show that Troy is a wonderful place to live, work, and play, and solve problems. And so, we're also, just the side point, that we're trying to teach our children to be thinking adults, that if they have an opinion, or anyone has an opinion, there needs to be some support for that, and not to just accept the opinion. So, we thank you so much. We made a PowerPoint for, that our children made the PowerPoint for you to see tonight, and thank you.
Thank you.
(Music) We know that President Kennedy said, "One person can make a difference, and everyone should try." Who helps Troy be a great place to live, work, play, and solve problems? What should we do? We've got it! We'll take two trips on the magic school bus to see Troy! We took a trip in the past times to learn what Troy was like long ago. No iPads, Smartboards, or laptops long ago. Children had many, many tours long ago. Troy long ago was fun, and we learned, but we wanted to go back to the present times. We learned that we want to live in Troy today. We traveled to City Hall, we met our city manager, clerk, and many more. We sat at the big tables where problems are discussed. We sat at city council chairs. We went to the Troy Fire Station. Troy helps the Troy Fire Department be great and keep us safe. Troy buys the best fire equipment. We learned what tools firefighters use. Troy keeps firefighters safe too. Troy is a great community, which helps us live, work, play, and solve problems. Thank you for Troy, a great community.
Nice. We know the future of Troy is in good hands. Thank you so much. Onto the homework. Yep. Okay, next order of business is C2. Community Affairs Director Cindy Stewart will talk about Casual for Cause.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council.
Good evening.
I'd like Nancy Morrison to come up. As you all are aware, we can wear jeans on Fridays, but we do it by collecting, raising money for our nonprofits, and for January and February, it's my pleasure to give the Troy Community Coalition just shy of $3, $597, I'm going to have to make up the extra, so we can say we gave you $600. So we thank you. You want to say a little bit about the coalition?
I just wanted to say, um, thank you on behalf of the Troy Community Coalition for the prevention of drug and alcohol abuse. Um, we want to especially thank the Troy City employees for being involved with Casual for a Cause, and we will put this money to good use on our prevention efforts. So, thank you. Thank you Cindy.
Thank you. That's a great cause. Our next order of business is a proclamation, celebrating 75 years for the Robert Allen Group, and if I could have Karen Stahl come forward.
Just before, as Dan's walking down, I wanted to just say it was my pleasure Glenn Lapin and Kurt Bovensee, we got to go over to Robert Allen to celebrate their 30, their 75th anniversary, and we received a check for, to fund a wildflower garden. So that was one of the...
We are very eager to plant.
Well, it's in the works.
I think it's getting warm enough.
I think so too.
Good evening.
Good evening. Nice to see you again.
Good to see you again. I'm going to read this proclamation, celebrating 75 years for the Robert Allen Group. Whereas 2013 marks a milestone in the history of Robert Allen Group. The company was founded 75 years ago by the Wiseman family in 1938 as the American Textile Company, selling mattress ticking fabrics and then introducing woven upholstery fabrics for purchase by upholsters and furniture manufacturers. And whereas the company expanded their distribution in the late 1960s, the company segmented each of the distinctive lines into brands: Ametex Fabrics, American Textiles, and Robert Allen. And whereas in 1980, the first corporate Robert Allen showroom opened in Boston, the Boston Design Center, which grew over the years to incorporate showrooms throughout the US: New York, Long Island, Boston, Washington DC, Philadelphia, Atlanta, Troy, Chicago, Houston, Dallas, Las Vegas, San Francisco, Los Angeles, along with three in Canada, one in the UK, as well as representation in Paris and Dubai. That's impressive. And whereas in 1983, Robert Allen introduced its first set of color library fabric books to the design industry, these book, color books became the staple in most designers' libraries. And whereas the Robert Allen Group prides itself on having brought color into interiors over the past 75 years, and they were thinking of additional ways to spread color into their communities since they draw so much inspiration from the natural world and the beautiful and gorgeous colors that occur within it naturally. And whereas the Robert Allen Group generously donated the funds to plant a field of wildflowers within the Civic Center complex, staff from the Robert Allen Troy showroom have volunteered to plant the seeds when spring arrives in Troy. I think it's here.
I think so too.
Now therefore be it resolved that the Troy City Council does hereby congratulate the Robert Allen Group on its 75th anniversary and extends our sincere thanks for bringing joy and color to our community through their gift of a field of perennial wildflowers to the city of Troy. Be it further resolved that the Troy City Council joins the citizens of this community in appreciation and celebration of the Robert Allen Group's 75th anniversary and their gift of color to Troy. Presented this, this would have been on the 15th day of April 2013, but today's the 20th, but signed by myself and all members of City Council. Congratulations on behalf of the City Council in Troy.
Thank you very much.
Did you want to say something?
I just want to say that we are very happy to, to beautify our lovely city. I've lived in the city myself for 15 years, and I've seen the flowers grow on the curbsides, and I know that with our economy, we've had to stop a bit of that, so it was our pleasure to bring more of the plants, and perennials of course, that'll come up every year. So it's wonderful to work for a company that still believes that you can, you know, one little thing can make a big difference. So, I thank you very much for this, and it's our pleasure to, to do this for the city.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you Karen. C4 is a presentation by the Benevolent Association of ASME Local 574, and I would ask Mike Fehalik and Joe Maury to come forward from, two ASME members, they're going to make a presentation this evening. Well deserved, I will say. Good evening, Mike.
Good evening.
And Joe.
Thank you. Thank you, members of council, city staff.
Could you talk into the mic?
As you know, we're part of the bargaining, one of the bargaining units here in the city of Troy. We are a offshoot of ASME Local 574. We work in the streets, engineering, water department, motor pool, and we also have three other cities that are a part of our local. So, we wanted to do more for the community that we work and live in. We're a pretty small group, but we try hard. And with the help of the mayor and some of the city council members, we offered up a scholarship for fundraisers, and we had the council members pick the winner, which must have been one of the hardest jobs, because Troy may have some of the finest kids going. But somehow, through all that, we have a young lady that rose to the top, and she didn't just get there easily. At the age of 12, she didn't see it coming, but she suffered a stroke, which disabled her quite a bit. But it didn't keep her down, she kept going, her grade points are impressive, she's very active, and we couldn't think of a better, better recipient than Ankeeta McCall. Here's your scholarship from the Benevolent Association of ASME Local 574.
Thank you.
Good luck.
I just wanted to say that, thank you so much for the scholarship, and I will not let you down.
Oh, I know. Positive, thank you so much. It was very emotional to read your, your application, and you've done a great job throughout your school year, and we wish you the best in college. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Those were five of the toughest applications that, that I read anyways. We have an addition of presentations this evening, C5, and this is some pretty exciting news for Troy. Every time I ask people how they feel about Troy, the first thing they ask me is, "What's going on at Maple and Laverneys? Is there anything going on at Maple and Laverneys?" I'm asked that question more than, than the Keemart headquarters, I think. And tonight, we have some exciting news for Maple and Laverneys, and I'm going to ask Mike Mahalich to meet me at the microphone, the CEO and founder of MJR Digital Cinemas. And I'm also going to ask Councilman Henderson to come down to podium with me, if I could. Thank you. I just, the reason I asked Councilman Henderson to come up here with me tonight is that many times, people don't understand the job of being on city council is more than just sitting up here and taking abuse. There, there, there's a good, good amount of work that goes on being a city council member, and Councilman Henderson was very instrumental in this particular project of bringing together two groups. He referred to it as he was the conduit of bringing together some investors to, to Mr. Mahalich, and who in turn met with city staff and put together a great, a great solution to Maple and Laverneys. And I'm going to turn the microphone over to Mr. Mike Mahalich, the CEO and founder of MJR, and he can explain the project, and we're going to do an unveiling of the project. It's very impressive, it's beautiful, and welcome to Troy. Thank you very much.
Thank you Mayor, and thank you Dave. Actually, I have a, a person I'm affiliated with, associated with, who called me. I've been looking to Troy for the last three or four years. If you look where our theaters are, we're kind of on the outside. I did actually start the main art theater in Royal Oak many years ago, and, and sold it for a lot of reasons, but, so I've been looking for something in the center part of town, and quite honestly, I spent a lot of time looking in the Big Beaver Corridor, and I just came to the conclusion that that just wasn't going to happen, you know, in the near-term future, so. And I'd looked around Maple before, but you know, Eric Balakowski, Dave's friend and my friend, called me and said, "Boy, I got a friend on the Troy City Council, and they'd really like to see something there." And I went and took another look at it, and, and the more I looked at it, the more I liked it, discussed it with some people that I have a lot of respect for, and we've decided that we think this is going to be a AAA location for us. You know, it's, uh, city of Troy certainly deserves, you know, a facility, I mean, that's a very pretty picture, but I under, I assure you, when you see the building, this is going to be something special. For instance, you'll see on the side of the building, it says "The Epic Screen." This is a new concept we developed that competes with IMAX very favorably. In a lot of ways, it exceeds the experience in an IMAX theater. When the IMAX theaters were originally built, they were the big screen primarily was their, was their, and they were playing certain pictures, you know, wildlife pictures, space pictures, undersea pictures, and they ran a half hour, 40 minutes. As a result, they weren't really the most comfortable theaters in the world because they ran people in and out, and, and pretty much, that hasn't changed a whole lot, in my opinion. When you see what we're going to build here, actually, the first one's going to be in South Gate, we're going to break ground in, in July, it'll be open in November, so you'll have an opportunity to come down there, and we'll invite you to the opening and, and really see what this is going to look like. It's a 460-seat auditorium, they're going to have large overstuffed leather-like chairs, loungers, 56 inches, which is a ton of legroom, be sitting, like, in your living room, in your, in your favorite easy chair, watching a movie on an 80-by-48-foot screen with a really highly specialized sound system. I guarantee you, the first time you walk into one of our Epic Experience auditoriums, you're going to say, "Wow." And that's my goal, and believe me, I'm going to make that happen. That said, I won't take up, I know you've got a, a full agenda tonight, but I just want you to know that I'm very happy to be here. We're going to be very good, a big part of the business community in Troy, we're looking forward to that, and, and being part of this community for a long, long time. And thank you for your support, and everybody here has just been wonderful, and we've got a lot of work to do to get in the ground by September, because I don't want to be in for winter construction, but if it, if it doesn't happen, it, it won't be for lack of effort on our part, so. And I, and I feel the same way about the reception I've gotten from your city managers and your people and your city departments here, and we're all on board to get this thing done, and we're going to make every effort to make it happen. So, thank you again, thank you for your time tonight, and I look forward to seeing you again soon.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
That is great news for Troy, and they are a Michigan company, so that's always a positive for us. We have no carryover items, so our next order of business is public hearings. So, this evening, our first public hearing, E1, is the adoption of the 2013-14 Annual City Budget and Three-Year Budget. So I will open the public hearing, and turn the microphone over to City Manager Kishnik.
Thank you Mayor. Actually, Financial Services Director, Mr. Darling will introduce this, but I just want to say a few things, because I'd be remiss if I didn't talk about the process that we went through to get to this point, and I want to commend the city council and the staff for all the work that everyone put in, and actually, the extra work that everyone went to, to at least help me with this first budget as I was trying to get up to speed. Everyone did a great job and was very receptive, and understanding that we were able to meet the strategies that were put in place by the city council in many ways, much too great to mention here, but number one is, there are no millage rate increases except in the refuse fund, which is, which is a needed increase, but everywhere else, there are no increases, and no sewer water rate increases as well. So I just, I want to highlight those, those, those areas so that we remain fiscally responsive and working together to get the right budget formula together with revenues and expenditures. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Darling for a brief introduction as well.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Darling. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Council. What you have before you is the city's annual and three-year budget as proposed. All budgets are balanced. All budgets were, were constructed using a conservative approach and encompassing the mission, vision, and values as developed by the city council through our budget study sessions. As again, Mr. Kishnik indicated, there is no millage increases through the refuse fund, which is basically a pass-through type entity, and our water sewer rates are proposed to remain stable as they were in 2012-13.
Thank you. I know we had a lot of discussion during the study session, so is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on this public hearing item?
One.
Come on up to the microphone, Mr. Reinhardt.
Some cities use the revenue from their tickets, traffic tickets, from the police department, they have a item number there, so you have an understanding how the law enforcement's happening in the city, because in New York, like somebody back there says, "I love New York," they, they write about $200,000 worth of tickets per policeman inside New York City. Just a second, that's it.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on this public hearing item? Saying none, I will close. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing, return it to the table for discussion and a resolution. Mayor Pro Tem Fleming.
Mayor, I know we've done a lot of work, so I'm going to move the resolution to adopt the 2013-14 Annual City Budget and Three-Year Budget as printed here.
Support? Moved by Mayor Pro Tem Fleming and supported by Councilman Campbell, that we approve the budget as printed. Discussion. That was easy, the vote, Ms. Bittner?
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes. Motion passes. Congratulations to city management. Great job. I think the reason there wasn't any discussion this evening is because it was so well explained in our study sessions. Our next order of business is public comment for items on the agenda. And for those citizens that plan to speak at either of the public comments sections this evening, please review the rules and regulations portion of the agenda as we will strictly enforce those rules. First speaker is Marv Reinhardt, resident, to speak on I-4, I-5, I-9, J-4B, enjoy J-5. Good evening.
Thank you, Mayor Slater, to let me talk, and the rest of the council people. Like I said, I-4, I don't see any revenue coming in from the police department for writing tickets. I drive around this city all the time, people throwing cigarette butts out, they're stopping in front of you, they're driving erratic, okay? And I just know how much tickets other cities write. Now, I heard that some Troy policemen never write a ticket in their lifetime working for the Troy Police. And I-5, okay, is talking about the Brownstown thing. That's the reason Viktor Leonovoff quit the city and quit the thing because all they do is take one bag of money, put it into another bag of money, but take that bag of money, put it in that bag of money, then put it back in their original bag of money. So, nobody knows really what's going on in the City of Troy. These numbers are going to change next week, has nothing to do about it. Oh, nine, five, okay. I'll skip to J-5 and J-4, especially J-5. They got a contract here for the city, written in Delaware, signed in Illinois, and then somehow, how in the world is our city going to enforce a contract like that? Because the guy squealed on himself. He says, if it goes over budget, the contractor's going to have to say, I made a mistake. Well, when I was a contractor going over budget, I just talked to my main contractor, we settled it behind the scenes. So, how in the world are you going to enforce a contract that's covered two different states, three different states? So, that's the type of law department you have in here, writing some type of contract with people. You can't even take penalization if they fail to do the contract. You have a good day.
Thank you. That completes the list of people who've signed up to speak on items on the agenda. Next item of business is response. Are there any responses this evening from council or administration?
Mayor?
Mr. Mayor?
I would just, the response we have, just looking at the budget in terms of ordinance fines, is about $350,000 to $400,000. So, I would just, I would just point that number out, looking at the budget.
Thank you. Our next order of business, there are no postponed items, so we will move to regular business. Our first order of business is mayoral appointments. And I have one nomination this evening. I will forward the following person to serve on the Planning Commission as a student representative. And his name is Frank Boulon. And I know he's here. He was here.
I believe he left. I believe he left.
Okay. I was just going to introduce him, but I will move his name forward as the student rep nomination for, to expire on 5/15/2015. Support? Moved by the chairman and supported by Mayor Pro Tem Fleming, that we nominate Frank Boulon as the student rep for the Planning Commission for the term to expire, would that be 7/31/2014?
Yes.
Okay. I was looking at a different date. For 7/31/2014. Discussion? The vote, Ms. Bittner?
Mayor Pro Tem Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Motion passes. There are no other nominations this evening. So, we will move to I-3, a request for closed session. Somebody like to move the resolution, please?
Mayor?
Councilwoman McGinnis?
Do you resolve that Troy, sorry, Troy City Council shall meet in closed session as permitted by MCL 15.268 CE&amp;H, Grand Sockwa versus City of Troy, and MCL 15.243G?
Support? Moved by Councilwoman McGinnis and supported by Mayor Pro Tem Fleming, that we meet in closed session this evening after the council meeting. Discussion? The vote, Ms. Bittner?
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Fleming?
Yes.
Motion passes. Our next item of business is I-4, Budget Amendment Number Three, with an introduction by Mr. Darling.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What you have in front of you, Mr. Mayor and City Council, is Budget Amendment Number Three, which really encompasses three specific amendments. They either reflect our desired compliance with PA 621, reflect the city's expenditure policy, all reflect city council consensus from our budget study sessions. The first one is for $526,000 for both revenues and expenditures in the general fund related to building permits. As you know, we use the Safe Build Contractor for our building permits. Fortunately, our building permit revenues have increased more than our original budget was from the prior year. Accordingly, our contracted expenditures are related to that and need to be increased as well. There's a zero effect on the general fund budget because we're budgeting both revenue and expenditures. The second one is related to reflect the city's expenditure policy, and it's for $25,000 related to some capital projects that there was money saved in the police building and maintenance operations that they would like to do some carpet redos. In order to do that, they need to expend that out of the capital projects fund. As such, there's no increased costs as they transfer from basically the general fund to the general fund's transfer to capital projects to fund that project. Again, the net effect to the general fund is zero. The final amendment is for a $1 million transfer from the general fund to the capital project fund to help assure some capital projects that we have going on, primarily related to some drain projects for the year, that we would like to use some projected surplus for '13 to help fund some of our 2014 capital projects.
Thank you. Questions for staff? Somebody like to move the resolution? Councilwoman McGinnis?
Resolve that Troy City Council hereby approves 2012-13 Budget Amendment Number Three as submitted, a copy of which shall be attached to the original minutes of this meeting.
Moved by Councilwoman McGinnis and supported by Councilman Campbell, that we approve the resolution as printed. Discussion? The vote, Ms. Bittner?
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Motion passes. Our next order of business is I-5, the Approval of the Troy Brownfield Redevelopment Authority Proposed Fiscal Year 2013-14 Budget, introduced by Mr. Darling.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. What you have before you is the proposed budget for the Troy Brownfield Development Authority. The budget is a balanced budget with appropriations of $7,035. It should be noted that the projected ending fund balance is estimated to be $739,011 at the end of 2014. Of that, it should be noted that there is a restriction for part of that in the amount of $551,558 for the restricted revolving loan fund.
Questions for staff on this? Somebody like to move the resolution? Mayor Pro Tem Fleming?
Yes, Mayor, I move the resolution as printed.
Support?
Moved by Mayor Pro Tem Fleming and supported by Councilwoman McGinnis, that we approve the resolution as printed. Discussion? The vote, Ms. Bittner?
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion passes. Our next order of business is I-6, the Approval of the Troy Local Development Financial Authority, LDFA, Proposed Financial Year 2013-14 Budget, introduced by Mr. Darling.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. What you have before you is the 2013-14 Local Development Financing Authority Budget. Again, the budget is a balanced budget. It shows appropriations of $135,187 with an estimating ending fund balance at June 30, 2014 of $79,808.
Questions for staff? Mr. Campbell, would you like to move the resolution?
I would love to. Thank you. Yeah, I'd like to move it just as printed, please.
Support?
Moved by Councilman Campbell and supported by Councilwoman McGinnis, that we approve the resolution as printed. Discussion? The vote, Ms. Bittner?
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next order of business is I-7, the Approval of the Troy Downtown Development Authority Proposed Fiscal Year 2013-14 Budget, introduced by Mr. Darling.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. What you have before you is the Troy Downtown Development Authority's proposed budget for 2013 through '14. Should be noted that the budget is a balanced budget. Revenues and expenditures are, again, balanced, and it shows appropriations of $3,372,133, primarily for the use of debt service.
Questions for staff? Resolution, please. Councilwoman Pennington?
Propose that we adopt the resolution as written.
Support? Moved by Councilman Pennington, supported by Mayor Pro Tem Fleming, that we approve the resolution as printed. Discussion? The vote, Ms. Bittner?
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Motion passes. Our next order of business is a Special Assessment District Paving of Troywood and be introduced by City Assessor, Nino Lakari. Good evening, Nino.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Generally, I was just thinking, usually, we just run these through consent. But the last time we did one of these was 2008. I don't think anyone, possibly Mr. Fleming was the only one that was on council the last time we had one of these. It's a small paving project on the west end of Troywood. It's about 324 feet, comprises four homes. It was initiated by the residents, which they generally are. They make an inquiry down in the engineering department, try to decide if they can have the project done, how much it's going to cost them, what the payment schedule is. Usually, on a larger project where we'll do, you know, 1,100, 1,200 feet, involve 30, 40 houses, we'll set a public meeting in this room for the residents to come in and ask questions. Since there was only four residents involved, we just did that downstairs, met with them. You'll note that the city absorbed quite a bit of the cost here, and we always have, as long as I've been here, which is almost 34 years now. The city pays a big portion of the paving cost because we save so much money on the maintenance. It's far cheaper for us in the long run to have an asphalt street than a gravel road where we have to bring the grader in and level it out and put the chloroform in and keep the dust down. And when I first started as the assessor, which was about 16 years ago, we had 48 miles of unpaved roads in the City of Troy. We're down to just under four miles now. So, eventually, we'll have, all of the gravel roads will be paved, and that's our goal. So, we tried to pave Troywood several different times, could not get the residents to agree to the cost. They didn't want the traffic volume increasing, which they assume is not necessarily a true fact. So, when the four residents at the west end came in, it was a perfect little district for us to do. Again, it's 324 feet, it's about 20 grand. The amortization tables are in your packet. It's a 10-year payment plan. The interest rate is 6%. That's in, that's ordinance, not charter. That's in the ordinance. The specific resolutions that you're voting on now, they are standard resolutions, they are spelled out in the charter. The language is spelled out in the ordinance. As you can see, from what you're asked to approve tonight, we've already done all of this stuff. We're asking you to approve the cost estimates, we're asking you to approve the public hearing. So, it's, this portion is really just to set up the public hearing. That would be on June 17th. The residents would be able to come in and talk about the issues, although, again, there's only four. I would like to point out that there is an elderly lady at the east end of the project that was not in favor of the project. However, community block grant development funds are available to her. She will more than likely meet the income guidelines and have the cost of this assessment paid fully for her. So, she is, she wants to have the road paved, she just doesn't want to pay for it. Council's policy has been at least 51% has to be in agreement. You've got about 75% of the owners, 68% of the frontage, because it's assessed on a front-foot basis. So, we're far above our normal amount of approval. And again, it's 324 feet, but it's a good start here. It's at the end of Jennings, it'll go around the corner. Jennings is paved, and I think that's all I have. I can answer any questions you might have.
Questions for staff? Mr. Lakari? Thank you.
Thank you.
Somebody like to move all three of the resolutions? Councilwoman Henderson?
We have to move them individually or all three at the same?
We can do all three together if you wish.
I'd like to move Resolution 1, 2, and 3 as printed.
Support? Moved by Councilman Henderson and supported by Mayor Pro Tem Fleming, that we approve all three resolutions as printed. Discussion? The vote, Ms. Bittner?
Mayor Pro Tem Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Motion passes. Good evening, Mr. Vendett.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Our next item of business is I-9, and it's nice to see your smiling face.
Thank you. Item I-9 is the Approval of a License and Easement Agreement with CN Railroad, also known as Grand Trunk Western Railroad. The license is for the bridge, the easement is for the platform and the west elevator tower. These agreements are required because these transit center elements are located completely within the CN right-of-way. The cost of the license is $1,000, and that cost is completely covered by the federal grant, which is providing the funding for building of the transit center. There is no cost for the easement agreement. CN set today as a deadline for adoption of these two agreements, or construction would be, would be shut down. We have been working for several months to get this done, and I'm happy to report, in smiling, that with the help of the Attorney's Office, a lot of their help, that these agreements are ready for approval today. It's important that these agreements be approved at this critical time and that work not be interrupted because the ITC power lines are scheduled to be re-energized the end of this month. And barring any delay, we're going to get the roof on the elevator tower, which has to be done only when the power is off. If that's not done, then the next power shutdown will likely not be until fall or even later end of the fall, and that would make on-time completion of this project all but impossible. The completion, the required completion date is October 1st in terms of the funding, two-year funding requirement. And barring any delays, we are on schedule to meet that deadline and even finish earlier, September probably. Thank you. I can answer any questions you may have.
Questions for staff? Thank you. Somebody like to move the resolution? Councilwoman McGinnis?
I will move the resolution as printed.
Support.
Moved by Councilwoman McGinnis and supported by Councilman Pennington that we approve the resolution as printed. Discussion? The vote, Ms. Bittner?
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Fleming?
Yes.
Motion passes. See, Mr. Kishnik, DPW director, is at the podium for I 10.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I 10 is an amendment to Chapter 20 and proposed water connection fees for, starting in July 1 of 2013. There are three items that I want to bring to your attention. City Manager Kishnik and Tom Darling already brought the first item, but I wanted to repeat that there are no scheduled water and sewer fee increases for this year. This is the agenda item that we typically bring that to you. Number two is in Chapter 20, the water connection fees. We have a situation where the federal government has a lead-free connections now for underground infrastructure. It used to be just in your home that they required that to be lead-free. So in addition, we have increased cost due to those materials because the cost in many of these have gone up from 10 to 30 or 40% because of the lead-free requirements, another unfunded mandate that has come down to us at the city level. Number three is just a situation where we had a figure of $25 in the collection portion of Chapter 20, and what that did is it was a little bit in conflict with a schedule we have to turn water on and off. It's in our schedule at $50. This in the past, we missed it. It was in two different places. We want to simplify this, remove it and just say service charge, and we go back to the service charge fee schedule, which we update and look at each year. Those are the three items under the agenda item. Any questions?
Questions for staff? Thank you. Councilman Campbell, did you want to move the resolution?
Oh, certainly, Mayor. More than happy to move that forward just as is written. Thank you for calling on me again. Appreciate that.
Moved by Councilman Campbell and supported by Councilman Pennington that we approve the resolution as printed. Discussion? The vote, Ms. Bittner?
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Motion passes. Our next item of business is I 11, the proposed agreement with Ice Lounge at 5903 John R., and City Attorney Bloom will make an introduction. Good evening.
Thank you, Mayor. This was an item that actually appeared on your agenda a couple of agendas ago, and council at that time was also contemplating passing a revised ordinance, which you did at your last meeting, which was effective immediately. This is an agreement for a hookah establishment. This is proposed by the attorneys for the, that owned the proposed hookah lounge, and essentially, one of the, the brother of the proprietor has a criminal history, and so with this agreement, if you do approve it, then if the brother is found on the site or in any management capacity, operating or anything, then the, the city can terminate that license so that they would no longer have a license in that establishment. In addition, there are other elements to the agreement that basically mirror what you passed in your ordinance amendments last, at the last city council meeting, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Councilman Pennington?
Laurie, it seemed like when we were talking, it was, he wasn't going to be working there. Now it's, he can't even be on the premises?
Correct.
Okay, that's good. All right.
Are they here this evening?
I do not see them in the audience this evening. I know that the attorney is not present.
I don't have any questions for Councilman Campbell?
Uh, yeah, I know we talked about this before, and it just seems like after the issues we had last week, the decisions we made last week, to have another one start with a rather shaky foundation, it doesn't seem to make a lot of sense to me. And when you see this map we got from the police department, we have three of these lounges on John R. all a mile apart. We have three, potentially three of them on Long Lake a mile apart. I think it's, I think we've reached our saturation point for these, these lounges, and as for myself, I'm not going to be voting to support this or any more of these anymore in Troy.
Councilman Henderson?
Question for council. Is this, this is a one-off agreement. Is this agreement going to be tied to any future hookah lounges? Should they, specifically the one that was kind of in question last week after you?
No, this is specifically for these operators of this business because they're really the only ones that have the potential questionable history. We just, we, we looked at their application itself, and so it's tied to their application.
At this point, we have not moved the resolution for discussion. If that happens, then I have some things that, that I will say. So if somebody wants to move the resolution and get it seconded, we can have a discussion about the resolution. But at this point, does anyone have any questions for Ms. Bloom? Councilwoman McGinnis?
I have a couple of questions. Based on our discussions last week about the ordinance, we limited the number of licenses that could be transferred into the city of Troy to five, and I just want to clarify, would this be considered number five then?
This is one of the applica, one of the license, the exemptions that the state of Michigan has granted.
So if we weren't, if we were not to approve this one, then we would technically have one remaining that would be available. Is that correct?
It's very possible that, that it would be still available, yes.
And did anyone have an opportunity to speak? I noticed that you provided a lot of background on this for, for a previous meeting, so this is from April 11. Did anyone have an opportunity to speak to the applicant in light of the ordinance changes that we made last week?
Yes, the, the attorney is aware of the ordinance changes that were made. Most of those changes, we were anticipating anyways. They were in the proposal when we drafted the agreement, so they do mirror the ordinance changes that are in the, the ordinance revisions.
And were they aware that this is on the agenda for this evening?
They were, yes.
Okay.
Any other questions for Ms. Bloom? Mayor Pro Tem Fleming?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a question. Mrs. Bloom, are you aware, have they pulled a building permit and already spent money at this site, and they're basically ready to open, or what, what is the situation with this business?
They are ready to open. They have invested some money. What they did was they moved from a smaller store to a larger store, so they've, you'll see the sign is, is up at this restaurant, and they have done some investment. They have also, they also have a lease that they have entered into as well.
Any other questions for Ms. Bloom? Did anyone, oh, Councilman Henderson?
One last one. The, in the paragraph that refers to the one individual not being able to be on premises, we can revoke their license. Then does that free up one license in Troy? If this is, presuming this is the fifth?
If, if they, the exemptions are from the state of Michigan, so you, you can only have the five exemptions that are already currently granted. You cannot transfer in any additional exemptions into the city of Troy. So yes, this is one of the five.
Just a follow-up then. So if, if this is revoked, then the ordinance is changed? Now we can only have four?
No, because this, they could potentially sell this license.
Okay.
Councilman Pennington?
I have one more question, Laurie. This actually might be for the chief, but this individual that is not going to be allowed on the premises, do we know, you know, who he is?
Yes, we do. He's actually had a lot of the interaction with the city officials so far.
Okay, at this point, does somebody want to move the resolution to the table for discussion? I have a question for Ms. Bloom then. If there isn't a resolution brought to the table, we can't, we wouldn't vote no then, correct? This would just hang, or?
This would actually be an item. I'm, I'm sensing that there's no support for this agreement, and if that's the case, I'm sure that we can withdraw this item from the agenda, no motion having been made.
Is anybody going to move the resolution tonight? And just let those in the audience know, each of us tonight were given a pamphlet from the Troy Community Coalition, Nancy Morrison. Thank you for this. And on the back, it, it, I think it tells you pretty much everything you need to know about hookah, and the Arab-American Chaldian Council is, is printed on this pamphlet, and I don't think I could vote for, for the hookah anymore in Troy personally, so it's time to move forward. Our next item of business is I 12, Publicly Funded Healthcare Insurance Contributions Act, and I, I see Miss Peggy Sears, our HR director, at the podium. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, members of city council. We're here tonight to propose to you a solution, or at least temporary solution, for applying PA 152, which is a public act to control the cost of healthcare and bring them into some kind of a manageable amount. A year ago, the decision was made to opt out with the idea that we would look at it again in a year. Since that time, we have had the health insurance transition over to human resources. We've fortunately been working with a new city manager. We have contracted with a benefits consultant to try and get things on board, help educate HR and such, and in the meantime, the analysis of the hard cap and 80/20 has reflected a significant financial impact on employees. A decision has to be made tonight, but to be fair, we would like to offer a solution that will give us time to give adequate evaluation and consideration to the issues involving PA 152 that will result in a balanced goal for both employee and employer. We are proposing to opt out, but with safeguards in place. What we would like to do is opt out, in six months, review it. In the meantime, we would have education sessions with the employees and analysis of the issues with city council through study sessions. If in six months' time, 80% of the employees that are impacted this year have not switched over, then we would implement the hard cap for years two and three and then make plan, or year two, and then make plans moving forward on how to deal with the topic for years two and three. The option that we're proposing still saves the city $348,000. It also provides less financial impact to the employees and hopefully will incentivize those, that, those that are not in the community blue, the cheaper health plan, to move over into that plan. That will bring the premium cost down for both parties. I'm here to answer any questions you may have. I don't know if city manager would have anything to, that he would like to add.
Questions for staff? I know we asked some questions throughout the process, and Mr. Kishnik provided kind of an addendum to us to kind of break us up today, so I think we're pretty educated, fairly educated on, on the topic.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Somebody like to move the resolution? Councilwoman McGinnis?
I will move the resolution as printed.
Support.
Moved by Councilwoman McGinnis and supported by Councilman Henderson that we pass Resolution I 12 as printed. Discussion? Mayor Pro Tem Fleming?
Yes, Mayor. Could we put a date certain in here? It says that if after six months, at least 80% of the employees have not migrated to the community blue plan, there would be a contingency. Could we put a date certain in there, just rather than saying six months? Can we make that, I guess that would be November 20?
That's fine with me.
Move to amend the resolution to strike after six months and insert if by November 20, 2013.
I'll support that. Moved by Mayor Pro Tem Fleming and supported by the chair that we amend the resolution to replace six months with November 20, 2013. Discussion on the amendment? The vote, Ms. Bittner?
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion passes. We need to vote on the original.
Resolution as amended.
Councilwoman McGinnis?
I just had one question, and it's, I believe it's, it's clear, but I just want to make sure. When we refer to at least 80% of the employees in our resolution, that is 80% of the employees that would be affected in the coming year, correct?
That's correct.
And the, the contracts that we'll be dealing with in the coming year represent 65% of our workforce, right?
And not the other two unions that have contracts through 14 and 15?
Ultimately, we'll be having the same conversation with those as well, but I just want to make sure it's clear that when we're talking about 80%, it's 80% of the contracts that we're dealing with in the coming year.
Good point. Good point. Vote on the resolution as amended?
Need to move in a second for the amended resolution.
Somebody like to move the resolution as amended? Mayor Pro Tem Fleming?
I'll move it.
Moved by Mayor Pro Tem Fleming and supported by Councilman Campbell that we pass the resolution as amended. Discussion? The vote, Ms. Bittner?
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember, or Mayor Pro Tem Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next order of business on the agenda is the consent agenda. Does anyone on council wish to pull a consent agenda item? Could have a resolution, please. Councilwoman McGinnis?
Resolve that Troy City Council hereby approves all items on the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Moved by Councilwoman McGinnis and supported by Mayor Pro Tem Fleming that we approve the consent agenda as printed. Discussion? The vote, Ms. Bittner?
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Motion passes. Memorandums and future council agenda items are none submitted. None submitted by council. We will move to public comment for items not on the agenda. Mr. Richard Peters, Troy resident.
Good evening. Good morning, Mayor, council. Appreciate y'all, the work you're doing, and hopefully things will, you know, progress. Yeah, I got a couple of things. I don't know if this was in the budget, but on these refreshment stands in the parks and recreations, I have a friend there and works in them, and it seems like they get awful hot in those things. And I was wondering if maybe the city could maybe lease a air-conditioning unit, some of those things, or, you know, maybe buy one for them. They're not too much. I think they run about a hundred bucks or something, $150 each. I also think that the library could be open until 6 o'clock during the summer on, on the weekends. 5 o'clock seems like, you know, I can understand the wintertime because it's dark, et cetera, but I don't, you know, I, I just don't see any real reason why it couldn't be open till that extra hour. I also think Troy should try to keep its roads as rustic as possible. You know, it's nice to have all this pavement and stuff, but there's something about, you know, quality having a rustic road. I, I for one disagree with the beach road being that, and I, if Troy is the one where by price for rental homes, that, where that's at, yeah, I, I disagree with that. Also, the Hunter, is that what they call it? A Hunter? Hunter?
Hookah. Hookah?
Hookum?
Hookah.
Yeah, if they do have that, I'd hope that they have a couple, make sure that they have extra security guards if there's problems with that, because, you know, we can't have our police, you know, going to one place all, you know, you probably know that better than I do. Also, I'd hope, as for the state, I would hope that the auto insurance rates would start coming down, that they start doing something about that up there. They've been saying they've been doing something. Also, I'm going to throw this out. I would hope that, well, maybe we could get a study going in this city about a people mover, say going from the transit center down 16-mile road, and just the effectiveness of it, say model- of it, say model that to something like Orlando or something like that. I don't, you know, maybe the people could call in about that, something, or maybe it could be funded by the fact, or the practicality of it. But I just thought it was an idea. And also, with the carbon emissions being what they are, they increased them lately that, I don't, maybe the state do like California, I think California had some kind of carbon tax or something, some kind of carbon thing for it. I think this, you know, I'd hope that we take a look at that, so. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I believe that's the list of people that have signed up this evening.
She didn't sign me up. I want to give six minutes to talk to you people every six weeks, or two weeks, or one week, and I sign up at both, both, and Cindy might have misunderstood me, okay? Two, about C-5, I worked tirelessly on a committee to keep the IMAX off city property a few years back. They wanted to build an IMAX right out here on city property, and we discouraged them. Two, we have alcohol places almost on every street corner of this city, and now we're going to limit the Arab community to four-smoke places, and we're supposed to be a diversified city. Okay, now getting to be my Packer papers, the first page that's not connected pertains to Doug Teets and what Keep Strong thinks about it, and Troy Patch puts on their, on their paper on a continuous basis. The first page of my Packer paper is just stuff that you might have to, to know about dealing with contracts. The second page is the end of the Republican Party as we know it, put out by the Troy Michigan Blog. And I got that off of another website further down the page, not on his page, but that shows you where your stuff goes. And then I got a little thing, if you got a problem, don't have my phone number, I guess you don't have a problem with me. The second page is Troy Patch attacking somebody named Dale, and they make a religion out of it. They continually attack this man for everything from his intelligence to why he's even moving in Troy. And I should tell the second grade teachers that if you don't say exactly what Troy tells you, the Troy police will knock on your door and ask you to move out of Troy, and also will help you move out. And you were there, Mayor Slater, when the policeman said that in front of Judge Mester. Isn't that great about how the mayor put us together early in life? And then the second, third page, there's more comments from one particular person named Kathy. She seems to be an expert on Troy. The next page is again showing you the dirty tricks that people pull, and all those names down at the bottom. If I can't get any help from anybody in Troy, I do have people down south side of Seven Mile, on the other side of Dequender, east side, that's willing to go through everybody's backgrounds to find out exactly who they are in the city of Troy, and I'll put them up on the internet. So if I don't get any help from inside the city, I can go outside the city, no problems. The third, the, the next two pages is a continual attack against me on the newspapers that though I won the case, still haunts me, and I still get hate mail from these comments in the great, the second to the last page is a cartoon. I never give up. Don't worry about it. I'm self-funding, self-writing, and I have no feelings according to the military people what I did. I have exactly no feelings, okay? So don't worry about me having feelings get involved. And the last page is me, to let you know, I do have lots of people that all I got to do is say a name, all I got to do is say a name. So you guys rest sure, I rest good, and remember, I'm going to start saying names. Have a good day.
Our next item of business is council referrals. There are none, so we'll move to council comments. Are there any council comments this evening? Councilwoman McGinnis?
Just have my quick public service announcement. As I'm sure many of you noticed, we received our summer edition of the Troy today, and if you haven't had a chance to look through it, it's got a lot of very good, important information. Thank you to Cindy Stewart and a lot of other staff members that I know they put hard work into this. You can look and see some details about great new businesses that have popped up in the city of Troy, as well as a lot of important information about things that are going on in the summer. So I just wanted to point that out. If you see this in your mailbox, make sure to check it out.
Thank you. Any other comments? Next order of business is reports. There are a handful of reports. Anybody have any discussion on reports this evening? There are no study items this evening, so we will recess and reconvene in 10 minutes at the boardroom for a closed session. Thank you for coming this evening.